And is being recorded and your participation is your consent to be recorded and rebroadcast on the Towns YouTube channel. Who wants to lead off?
If you want, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll go back to what we discussed before. We're ready for an engine to replace our engine that we have. We've been having issues with it. Like I said, it's not our oldest vehicle, but it's the one we use all the time.
Which one is that on the chart?
That is engine one. That would be the one from two.
Two thousand and seven?
Yes. Twenty nineteen, twenty years old. By the time we get rid of it, it's going to be twenty one or whatever.
Okay.
Thank you.
What kind of problems do you have with that, Terry?
Electrical. Lately, we had issues. The truck's just not holding up like it should have. When it's not from the abuse, it's just the way it's built, the way that the undercarriage and the body motors, we got leaks, you know, we have just time. If we don't, it's going to break down, which it just did this last year. We had electrical issues. Take it, jump, you'll get out of the station, take off, no pump, no lights.
It's been affecting service.
It has. It definitely has. Scary too. If you go to a scene and pull up in the fire truck, it doesn't work. Um, I don't know. This is a go break. That's the reason that we're kind of pushing this one above that tanker that you see that's older. Tanker doesn't go out on every call. I know it's older and I know it's got some issues, but that's, that's nothing we it's more of a rural vehicle. We only use that out in the township basically. But it does have a pump, so that's the reason that we bought it. It's a pumper tanker to help our community have two pumps for the insurance.
I just want you guys or you all to understand that in my case, the questions I'm asking are not indicative of which way I feel you ought to go. It's just a matter of trying to get understanding. And I'm looking here. Is that truck eleven or truck two?
Truck eleven. It's a pickup truck that we use to mileage most of the time when guys go to classes or we go to fires. It's just a pickup truck.
Oh, that's a pickup. Don't you have another one that looks like the one that you have? What one's that?
So the tanker.
No, I know the tanker, Bob.
So we got the tanker, the rescue and the, and the engine.
You don't have two engines? Oh, I thought you had two engines. Okay. Okay.
To tag on with the issues, that one's got a now perpetual pile of oil absorbent under it.
Yeah.
From the oil leaks. Um, we've been chasing electrical issues. We've had multiple issues in the past six months where like he said, when we pull out of the station, we have no electronics. So they figure it out when they go to pull out and they turn on the red lights and the red lights don't come on. And okay, that's relatively minor issue, but when we don't have power with the red lights, we don't have power of the pump. So that truck becomes yeah, that happened on three calls that I know of that we pulled out and then we literally just backed it right back in, popped in another truck and away we went. The generator on it, which controls all of our auxiliary electrical, including our scene lights is outdone, unrepairable. Um, it, it doesn't work. It hasn't worked, uh, continues not work. They've told us it's unrepairable. So we've got no scene lighting. We've got no auxiliary electrical. So our electrical tools, our sawzalls, our electrical scene lighting, all that, we can't use any of that.
Sure.
Like there's outlets, one twenty outlets.
So as far as if you had a fire, you have in your, in your, uh, equipment, you've got one engine and one ladder truck.
And the, the tanker is a pumper tanker.
The pumper tanker. Yeah. So that would be that's, that's what you have to basically fight a, fight a fire with. Yeah. Okay. I thought you had two engines.
What would it cost to repair all those three items?
Well, repair.
Well, you need a new generator. Like, like I got that when you just said that. So what would the cost be?
That's the question I can't answer.
You know, somebody you can get in to get the
Come through and go through it all day long. Wiring in the things that might work today. But if it don't work tomorrow, even if they check it, tester on it, it's working. Okay. Tester on it, working. We take it out, it doesn't work. We have that happen with the situation we're talking about now. We thought we fixed it. Somebody came and worked on it. Oh, we got this fixed. No, it didn't work for five days and then the sixth day it didn't work again. So how do I fix that? The issue is that the truck as a system is aging. The electronics are, it's all old technology. It's
Which is, yeah.
Uh, you know, how I got that seventeen years old.
Thirteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you were to make the investment, trying to make the upgrades, you're going to put in money and you're looking at a truck that has a resale value or a trading value that's minimum and you're investing in that and you're just prolonging. I, I, I'm just trying to understand it. You put that money in, that's not increasing the value of that truck on the backside of it. And, and you may not even, and what I'm hearing you say is you're not even guaranteeing operational for another year or two, five years. I do. That's what you're telling us. Okay.
The other, the other issue, um, in, in my opinion, you know, I, I feel the truck will leave out ground. Um, and, and when it comes down here, I text Jerry to bring it down there. Um, we'll show you. I mean, this truck is crammed full and we, we don't have room for anything more and we're not getting less equipment, getting more equipment. We get new challenges every day. You know, we've now got electric or, uh, you know, electric vehicles and hybrids that even there's firefighting systems for this stuff, you know, and this becoming more commonplace is we're getting solar panels coming to the area. We're running medical calls now. We don't have room for a medical bag on this truck. We don't, it doesn't have one. You'll see it's, it's cram full. The, the cab, it's not designed to be a fire truck. It's a, it's a truck off a lot, you know, that they use these for over the road trucking and coke delivery and things like that. So we've got three seats crammed in there and I encourage you to climb up in there and take a seat and, and seriously, climb up in there and see what it's like to put that pack on and then try it with gear sitting next to a guy like this.
I mean, we chuckle, but it's, you know, what it doesn't have to get first of all.
The two man in the room, two men in the back is really a challenge.
And it really isn't. It, 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 it really hinders us. Um, there's, there's better technology. There's better, there's, there's, they're, they're just designed better. Like I, like I explained it before, the skyrocketed price of, and then we were shooting in the eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollar range. And we started opening the door and it was like, wait a minute. You know, we need the little lining. We don't need this. Good. Cause you're not getting, that's what this price is. Uh, one point two to one point three million dollars is not the Cadillac.
Knowing you don't have crystal ball, do you see it? I mean, I don't see the inflation going down, but I mean, what's the trend? Is there any trend out there talking?
It's been outrageous. I'm telling you what, in the last probably eight years, it's just been thing, the, the materials that used on the fire truck are the things that drive the price of the truck up to, you know. Uh, look at what cars did in the last five days. Oh my God, I believe it skyrocketed. People were twenty thousand, forty thousand for the same car in four years. Well, this is the truck and it's the same thing. Roll over ratio on these things is in five years to thirty years. If you can make one ask that one. That's great in lighters forward or Monterey where they don't run as often or as many calls, which using as much, they last longer. Do, but still getting electrical issues like this one, electrical issue on this one's, uh, we're, we're questioning each other when you go out. Look at each other going, are we going to be good? Like you said, it takes one time. If you go out there without it, we're no good to them. Might as well not even go in there. And I don't really feel that is fairly community at all. It's not us making this up. This is, it's happening, unfolding in front of our eyes too. So that, that's exactly on the table of where this is. We, we don't step up. I think that there could very possibly be issues, serious issues. And like you said, I got, you know, we've got a documented in run reports on incidents where we've been dispatched out and pull out of the truck.
Yeah.
Cause that, that's a delay in response. So we just, you know, we document that, that, you know, hey, we've tried responding engine one mechanical issue. Moved into whatever. Um, we get somebody down, we fix it. Sentinel comes down, usually within a couple of days. Fix whatever the problem is, but then the next day it's just the next one. And, and when, when you've got a truck that everything's electrical from, from the gas pedal, you know, to the lights, the pump, the transmission and everything. And then, you know, we keep, you know, the more we get into it, it's like the more issues it seems to create, especially when you start adding new to old.
Talk about your load. Like you mentioned your call rates, last five years increasing significantly.
Not significantly, but they've been
They've been on it up and it's
Yeah. And then of course, when we do run a BLS two dependent on what happens, this truck doesn't always be the one that goes. Truck eleven's got a medic bag in the back of it. So we can throw our technicians in there and go on a pickup truck if we have to. Squad truck is that's one that would be on that scene or alternate or BLS, but that's still as a run. If you go to accidents, sometimes, and we don't have equipment in R E M S, which we back up all the time now, busy sometimes when they're busy more in the summer than the winter. But yeah, that's making the call run more. To go, to get back to your, your answer on the trend on this, I, I do have some numbers because back when before we ordered the ladder, when we weren't sure if we were going to be able to make it happen or not, we were kind of, you know, pricing an engine to see how that was going to work budget wise. Um, so the, the same layout, same style of a pumper back in two thousand and eighteen, it was around seven hundred K. Um, give or take twenty twenty-two, it was nine fifty. And we knew that because they brought a demo that was from a town or outside of St. Louis they brought. And, and that, that truck had a lot of frills and that one was nine fifty. So that's why we kind of thought, okay, there's a lot of stuff we could cut out, you know, that we, we, you know, don't add a lot of functionality. Um, so we, you know, hey, maybe eight fifty to nine fifty kind of thing. Um, and then a, a truck just like this, this, you know, the same, same one that we're giving you a number on. New Buffalo just bought Town and Buffalo, Michigan for one point three, just over one point three million. And, and they've got, they've got some other frills on there. There's some things on there. Um, so the, some of the challenges with this and, and back to the inflation. So we had an update of our NFPA standards January first of this year, which changed some seating configurations, some different stuff, just things, how they have to, some of the rollover protections, some of the different things. So that added some, some cost. The big, the big one that's looking down on us, we got new EPA standards coming out in twenty twenty-seven. Um, that's done. That's signed into legislation. It's happening. They're prepping for it. Uh, what they told us was they're going to add on a hundred K just for emissions because they don't even know what it's going to cost. But the, the Cummins engines that we have now, they're, they're already sunsetting those. So the, the X twelve that's in the ladder, that's was the flagship engine at the time, that's they're, they're not, they're, that's being sunset. So there's going to have new emission standards. If anybody knows anything about diesel, emissions are, are enemy. Um, with the twenty thirteen, you know, all the, the D E F, all that stuff, the particulate filters that, I mean, it's they, they kill diesel motors and, and that's going to be double fold come the new twenty, twenty twenty-seven EPA standards. So any truck delivered after that will have to beat that. And that's part of what, like New Buffalo, they weren't ready to buy their truck, but they, they kind of, their hand was forced because they had to, they, they wanted to get the, the current Cummins engine while they're still available. And I think they ended up spending more than, than they were prepared to. Get ahead of that mandate. And that's going to be a problem, not just for fire trucks. That's going to be Bob's trucks. That's going to be the ambulances. That's going to be everything. So and it's going to cause more problems for us. It's going to cause maintenance to go up. And it's just something moving forward to be aware of. Anything diesel.
Yeah. The question is how do you pay for it?
That's why we're here. We, our budget won't withstand that. Um, I, I met with Marlene and I met with Karen two weeks ago and put their eyes on this and saying, no, this is coming, whether you want it to or you don't want it to. Something's going to happen. That breaking point's going to be there where they're either going to, something's going to bring down and you have to have new. And that forces your hand, you would spend more money because I don't, I don't even know if you can buy off. Every now and again, they have trucks that they make as demos. And I don't even think they're doing that anymore because they can't keep up with what they're doing. Now, before they'd make it fill, like filling out, we don't have a truck in this line. So they'd make a truck and kind of guess what department want on it and go around and show it, try to sell it. Well, I don't even think that that's a thing anymore because they can't keep up with the momentum as it's moving on. They can't do it. Fired, there's, all the companies are the same, not just one company, all of them. Plymouth just got a new engine. They ordered it two years ago, nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars two years ago. So in the two years time, I, there's, they've got, they've got a gravy up there. They've got Pierce. That's all they've ever had and Pierce is their friend. So whatever. Deal is Pierce trucks are like all same. They run them off like cars. So
They're, they're what, Terry?
Pierce is the brand name.
Yeah.
That's what Plymouth has for trucks and always has as far as I'm, I, I've never known them have anything about that.
I'm curious what our, I was just pulling up the agreement that Plymouth has an agreement with Center Township and West Township to provide fire service for them. And I'm wondering what the agreement between Union and Culver is and the compensation that we have currently.
It's split half. Everything is half.
Okay. So it's just whatever the budget is you, um, wait, I was just curious and I don't know if this provides a, not knowing how the taxing structure works. If this provides a, if there's any room in what you're able to tax that could generate more money, the, with the way that we had it set up in Plymouth was that the both center and west agreed to, um, ask for the maximum levy for firefighting fund every year. And then whatever they could generate was what they paid. And I didn't know if there's any room in that, that you would be able to have space to generate more tax.
I can't afford the EMS now. I can't get enough levy to pay my half of the
Okay. Oh, okay. That's, that's curious. All right. So there's, there's nothing there. Yeah. Yeah. All right.
Glad you brought that up too. Cause there's, you know, just, just kind of compare how we do things here in other towns. Cause Plymouth does it a certain way, Lakeville, Las Vegas, they all kinds. A lot of the departments that do town and township departments, they do where each municipality kind of buys their own fire trucks. So like the city of Plymouth buys a city engine and Center West Township buys a township engine. The way we do things down here, it's, it's more efficient because we, we figure out how to make a truck that fits everything.
Okay.
Um, instead of having, because there are actually vast differences, you know, city trucks are smaller because you don't need the water tank. You don't need to carry as much equipment. So you've got hydrants. So they can, they can put a smaller truck, which means smaller engine, smaller transmissions, smaller axles, all that stuff. Get out of township, you know. They're, they're doing more rural. So you're going to have different inlets and outlets, carry more water and all this. So you double your maintenance because you got two trucks to maintain. You got two trucks to keep on the road. And, and then they do, you'll hear them, you know, for this call, they take this truck and for that call, they take that truck.
How much does the lake, the houses kind of change a little bit of what you guys need in there on your truck in terms of your firefighting?
What it is because we have to, so our, our hose, our hose lines, like in the ladder. So we expanded when, when we built that truck, we laid that pump panel out. And it was, we basically designed it, um, the way the hoses are laid, the length of the hoses, because essentially we're going to treat, treat a lake house as we would a commercial building. Because the building you live in is the same damn size of the houses out there. So we, we essentially have to treat them as commercial buildings. So we have to have longer hose lines. We have to have higher foot nozzles. Um, we have a risk with our cabinet factory. So we have to be prepared for that. We have a, a commercial line. Um, and that's how the, the lake houses and frankly, even the towns and the, the houses in town now are, um, you know.
Getting that way.
It's not be getting bigger.
Marlene, are there, I've just not have, I know at some point when we were, I worked for Plymouth and we were putting together these deals with those townships, I had a better grasp mentally of how your type of funds work. But are there funds that you have separate funds for, like when you say your annual commitment is, that's just going to the operations of the overall. But is there separate funds for capital improvements versus just the fire operations? And are there other funds that you might have surpluses in that through certain transfers, monies could be moved in to help with the one time thing like this?
I have a cum fire fund, which is a separate, a separate fund, but I have a tax rate that goes into there and that builds up. Uh, you know, continually builds up, but then that's the money that I use to buy the trucks. I pay for my half the truck where you all borrow your half.
Sure.
I pay for my half. I cannot transfer that. That's a separate fund and I can't transfer that, but, but it can go to bed. I, I can buy trucks. I can buy ambulances. I, I block the, uh, radios. I can buy the uniforms, uh, any kinds of equipment I can buy out of that.
Okay.
Um, but can it be, well, I wouldn't transfer it because I'm going to pay for my half of the truck out of the cum fire fund.
How much do you have in that?
Thing that, how much do I have in it now? Probably bring it with me, but I would guess two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Is that one that I, I know some of those cumulative funds are ones that have to be like where the rate has to be reauthorized and it goes down over time, or is it set with its maximum rate, you know?
Yeah. It's got the maximum rate.
Yeah.
I think those once you reset them now, at least the, the cumulative capital fund that we have, once we reset it, then it's going to stay going forward. You don't have to go through that, but we did, we have it reset.
Marlene, if, if the town can borrow, can the township borrow?
It goes again. I never have, but I, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure you can.
I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing that out.
Can I borrow? Yes. But can I, where am I going to raise the levy after they all play?
Yeah, it doesn't.
I just forwarded an email to kind of blast that out to everybody. Rosenbaum, um, or Sentinel, they, they sent me something today because we're kind of talking about funding. He sent me some financing options that they offer. They offer a lease purchase program and there's some different things. I don't know anything about any of it. You all can take a look at it, see if it's anything that seems feasible, feasible, reasonable. But I, you know, I would consider interest rates versus inflation as, you know, these trucks get more expensive seemingly daily.
So yeah, we could look at at least purchase type arrangements.
We've talked about that in the past and it always shied away from us, but
I was, I was going to say, what's the positive? I was going to say, what's the positive versus negative?
Right. But when you're looking at a truck pulling up, you know, doubling a price in a matter of five years.
Well, I, I remember back, I think that the ladder truck was, what a million eighty, something like that. I think pretty close to a million eighty. How much of that was raised by donation?
Couple hundred thousand. I think I'll say it was around two hundred, was it? Yeah, it was probably.
Is that, is that an op, is that an option for part of this?
If you, if you can get somebody to give us some money.
Well, I know that, Terry.
As a solicitor, am I going to, are we going to go out to the department and solicit for money? We did for ladder truck because it was a specialty vehicle. It was made for everybody in our township. And even down, even out of our township, that vehicle is, uh, we spent money for over the last forty-five years, we held to. But this is not a specialty vehicle where, where this is an engine that every fire department in everywhere has, everyone has. It's not, it's not something special. You go, hey, we're buying a truck. You want to donate money? That's great. Um, that's, what can I say about it? It's a fire truck. It's, it's not a ladder truck. It's not something special.
It's a basic.
It's a basic. What's going to show up to your house if you have a fire? Every fire. So they're soliciting for it and you're going out and asking for funds. Sure. You can put something out there. No, we do have a good following and people do know, donate money, but I, I can honestly say I don't know how they're going to feel about us getting money for a truck to fight a fire at their house that they're paying taxes for all the time. On a normal basis, you see what I'm saying?
I do.
This is every fire department has this truck. And it's not a specialty. So and I'm sure people find out that we do need money and we might get some donations. But I don't know that it's going to be enough to push this number that we're looking for down low enough to even help. I'm telling you my budget, there's no way. So, but I'll say I don't think about three hundred thousand probably we got donated. What's that? Was counting people that donated through small numbers and big numbers in my head. It was around three hundred thousand.
Put that off the table. But Marlene has said, let's take private off the table. So we're, we're looking at going back to at least purchase type deal or we're looking at a bond market or deposits.
I, I don't push those buttons.
No, I, nor do I, but I'm just trying to put, the question was, how do we pay for?
Right. Yeah.
And so going back to that.
That's where I'm at.
That's the big question.
Yeah.
And in the same, and in the same stuff, and we haven't made this one yet, but you've got to remember in five years, the game's going to be again. So if we can't get ahead of this ball, which I've tried for years as Karen and I push and try to make that, we don't put money in there. We're never going to keep up over there. We, we tried. My, our budgets increased probably twenty percent, thirty percent in the last ten years. And it's still not what it needs to be. It's not there to cover these high end items that keep reoccurring every five or year, seven to 10 years. You know, you come up with radios, twenty years, we've spent a hundred thousand dollars or air packs, twenty years, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. No, three hundred thousand dollar budget. That doesn't work.
I don't recall, um, I know when, that's why I was with Plymouth when they just ordered the truck. He said it just got delivered recently.
I think it's, they said it's on the way. I don't, I don't have it yet. It's coming.
So I mean, that's been like a, almost two years, I think.
Two years.
I know that, and it's probably not a good comparison because when they signed that contract, I don't think we had to put up like a chunk of money. And they were like, the council's like, we'll figure it out. But knowing that Plymouth had the resources, if they had to figure it out, they could have found that whole chunk in another fund and, and come up with it. But, um, do you recall the deal of this? They need a large deposit?
I'm pretty sure that, well, when we were okay to build the truck or communicate or have right away.
Directly to the manufacturer?
And that's how, and that's how, and then the rest of the funds came in. And then we budgeted through my budget to pay for the downfall.
That'd just be interesting to know that
There's discounts built in at different marks. So like the chassis prepayment, if we, if we pay for the chassis like that's they
Well, progress payments, there were progress payments.
Back to it. They, but if you have this time, you give them money so they don't have to have it on, you know, so they don't buy the truck and set their lot free.
Yeah.
But it's wasn't astronomical money, but you're talking seven to ten thousand dollars. I, I remember I, there was savings on parts of that, but hey, we're like going, can we get the money to save the seven thousand? Every nickel we had to get into that one was a nickel we didn't have to start.
I was just thinking, I wish I didn't know the sequencing, the, if you got potentially two and a half years or so to actually have all the money, but the, the sequence payment.
Take, take a look at the, at the documents that I sent you over because there's some different, there's some different things built in here. And there, I saw there's like, uh, like if we paid for it a hundred percent upfront, I think it's like seventy thousand dollars to take off. Something like that. Yeah. I don't understand all this stuff. So we probably would more so know, but there's some different things in there to mull over.
Trying to think how that goes. Act now and say so.
Yeah. We'll send you a second fire trail. For your truck. You know, they, they used to always like, well, you know, if you do it by spring, you know, there's a three percent. And that was just like, if you do it this week, you know, if not, it's five percent next.
So we haven't been to the idea of grants. Taking a look at grant funding. I'm a new kid in town. For me, what's that look like to me?
I think that our per person value in our community is way too high.
Even though we're classified as?
Depends on what month of the year it is. Depends on when they take the study.
Yeah, I know. I know. Yeah.
We have
Until November.
Yeah. We haven't been able to get a grant for major, I mean, we've got some small monies through grants.
Sure.
But not like for vehicles. I mean, that's a whole different
That's why I'm asking the question.
No, it's, it's a, it's a No, it's, it's a, it's a good thing, good question. There's, there's some out there, but usually fire trucks aren't something that they, they fund.
Yeah, I did a little bit of research and looked at it and really honestly, you're looking at, we're down below.
What kinda, what kinda, I feel like ties our hands a little bit is, we look at, look at the property taxes that we bring in to the town, the township, and then look at our permanent residents. So we've got a huge number split amongst what looks like a very small amount of people.
Absolutely.
So if you pull up on the state, the gateway, um, that breaks all that down, like fire protection per capita, we're, we're in the top twenty for cost, both Towne Culver and Union Township per capita. So when you break it down per capita, it's, it's apples to apples, right? It doesn't matter how big a city is, we're looking for that. And we're, we're in the top twenty funded per capita, because that's amongst our, what? Thirteen hundred people.
Appreciate you pointing that, thanks.
Yeah. And that's what they look at and they're like, best funded in the city.
That's our great trade too, right?
You don't need a grant.
Yeah, I know that the last time that we did a, a study, it's probably been three years ago, at least, but we were right at, we just barely cleared the the maximum that you could have and still apply for a grant.
Yeah.
Don't pray to O'Crade.
Don't waste your money on that anymore.
Yeah.
That's the guys in the, yeah, there you go.
Has the academy paid all fire truck?
The last, the last fifteen of his receipt, yes.
And the payments that they're making for the regular budget is how much now? How much are we getting into the six, thirty? They're doing that in addition to the.
It was in addition to.
It was a total of fifty, wasn't it?
Hundred thousand dollars you gave us for the ladder over eight.
Right, five years.
That's twenty, um.
Twenty a year. And then they were gonna fund operations, sixty thousand dollars, split twenty-three, if I remember right.
Oh. Does Wayne stuck his foot in there?
Yeah, okay. I think it was.
So.
I don't know.
Good answer.
Whatever.
Bob, you mentioned something and, and, um, kinda caught my interest when you were talking about the type of engine you need and you're talking about, you mentioned something about rural.
Yep.
Okay. Going back to the fact of trying to get money for this particular engine, could the message be that this, that this is a special piece of equipment because of, you know, the lake? Um, you know, one thing, yeah, I, how can you spin it?
And you still, you just, you already had a lot of people put a lot of money into it, I don't think you try that.
Yeah.
You don't think you knock on the doors around the lake, is what you're saying?
I mean.
I'm okay with it.
It don't hurt, but you're, you're not gonna get near what we, we've got. And I'm not interested in knocking doors, I'll be home with you. I'm already volunteering my time to staff the damn fire truck.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be your, I got you.
But also, we're already paying taxes, they're all paying taxes. You know, we're asking for more money?
Yeah. Nope.
And I don't see the state, you know, saying, oh yes, you can get a larger percentage toward buyer EMS uh, emergency services.
And they offer it via the low it, but now we have to.
Yeah.
You know, the public safety with it.
Yeah.
The county council has to.
They're not gonna do it.
Nope, not gonna happen.
It ain't gonna happen.
And it's, I mean, it's not done, it's not gonna fund us, but it's something, something better.
It's, it's, yeah, it's not enough money to.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah.
So Marlene, your, your contribution would be about two fifty?
Oh, he asked me what my balance was now.
Oh. Okay.
That's just what my balance is now. Uh, you know, in another two years, I'd have another hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, but I can't pay my half upfront like I did before.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I'm still maybe four hundred thousand with it gets here. Not seven hundred thousand.
That's seven hundred and seven, yes.
Seven hundred thousand.
Listening to that, would that be something that, you said that it would be a discount if we paid it upfront, right, at a hundred percent, but that may not be, that may not be an option because of the way.
Well, you know, I'd, I'd have the two hundred thousand, but I could do tomorrow, which they wanted that, which, yeah, which would help with some discounts, but I can't pay my whole half. If we could get another hundred thousand from the academy though, because they're, you know, if we could get them to go in on another truck, if we could get a hundred thousand from them again, you know, that'd take the.
The building too.
Is there anything on the truck that we?
Is there a spring in it or not?
We can cut it. So this, this truck, and just to kind of let you in on, on what this, you know, gives you a picture in your head. Um, what we laid out is instead of the, the five-person cab now, it's, it's a six-person cab. And then it's got a thousand gallons of water, it's fifteen hundred pump, it's got a foam system on it, ladder has a foam system on it. For, for anything that involves hydrocarbons, so vehicle fires, especially solar panels, uh, any sort of commercial firefighting. Uh, a lot of it actually comes down, we got a lot of crud, just everything's synthetic. Um, so the foam system makes that truck more efficient in firefighting, significantly more efficient. Um, something that we don't have with, with current engine, uh, we, you know. Um, but it's compartment wise, it's, it's full height and depth compartments all the way down the truck. So what we look at now is we've got ladders on the side, one side, ladders on the side, because that chews up a ton of compartment space, they just put them in an overhead ladder rack, as for that. So it's, it's actually more efficient, it's, it's more more truck and it actually ends up being about five feet shorter than the engine that we have now. Um, some of the things that, that we did cut out is when, when we, when we spec the ladder, um, the spec for that truck is two hundred and eighteen pages long. We put a ton of time and effort into making a truck that's gonna fit exactly what we need, that's why it took two years to spend that. Um, and I don't know, some of you came to some of those meetings and do it factory business and we had demos and two hundred and eighteen pages of, and that's not pictures, that's, you know, typewritten pages of specs that, that we put together to, to make this truck fit well for the town, well for the township. The idea was when we did this, when we laid out this cab, when we laid out the pump and everything, the next truck would mirror it. That's kind of where we're at now, we have a really, really good layout with that ladder and it works really well. Um, what we have now is we make it work, you know, we get fires, we, we put, oh, it's not ideal, but we do it and that was what was available. You know, in that era when we bought that truck. Um, this truck, like I said, we, we're not getting more, but we're not, we're not getting less equipment, we're getting more equipment. So it's gonna have just better laid out, more space for more crap that it comes. Because we designed this, this is a heavier duty truck, it's, um, it's the fully extruded body, it's the lifetime warranty, it's the same as the ladder, but we invested that extra money in the ladder to get a truck that's not gonna corrode and it's not gonna break down because it's gonna, it's designed to hold up for thirty years. You know, can we find a cheaper truck that's? Yeah, is it gonna be a throwaway? It's gonna be a throwaway, it's designed for a, an urban department that runs through them and kicks them back out down the road in six to eight years. You know, those options, they're out there. Um, and, and if that's what you want us to look at, we can, I've got numbers on those as well, um.
For comparative reasons, just give me, shoot me a number.
Perfect, so, so.
I'm not setting you up.
Oh, right, that was very honest. So, so here's the thing, um, because, I mean, you can Google fire trucks, you can find, you can find, um, brands, dealers, whatever, all over the place, right, just like vehicles. There's, there's, there's a few different tiers, so there's kind of what I call the, the premium and that's Pierce and Sopin are, are the two high price right now. I called Sopin, but like, hey, you wanna give us a price and they kind of laughed at me because we couldn't afford them with the ladder, uh, we didn't like their product anyway, but we couldn't afford them with the ladder and they go, we're gonna be twenty-five percent higher than the proper cover. Okay? Pierce, Pierce is expensive, they're the most expensive there is. We get down into the mid-tier, we got Rosenbauer, um, there's E-one, there's KME, uh, those are, those are also local dealers here. We compared all those heavily when, when we bought the ladder and we found Rosenbauer to be the best mix of quality and affordability. And that's why we bought Rosenbauer, it wasn't even anything we started out looking at or interested in, because we never dealt with them. And, and they came through and it's been a good product for us. Those other ones, we can go back, they're, they're gonna cost the same price. Now we're gonna get down in the bottom tier, so you do a Google search, you're gonna find one called Couts Brothers. They have a, um, they have a, a pole barn in Pennsylvania that they build fire trucks. They do, and people buy them, there's places to buy them, there's, you know, there's rural departments that buy them, there's probably cities that buy them. Um, they build one fire truck and what it is, is what you get, it's, it's got this engine in it, it's got this pump in it, it's got, here's the layout and it's, it's red, you don't even get to pick the damn color, you can't get white and red if you want, not that color matters.
Yeah.
Color doesn't matter, fire, but my point is, they're selling these fire trucks, when, when I called them up uh, in February, when we got the sticker shock on this, with this Rosenbauer came back, being three hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than what I expected it to be, and I've kept up with what fire trucks cost. I follow this stuff.
Yeah.
And so it's like, oh my God, we need to, we need to consider some other options. So I come across Couts Brothers, I give them a call and they say, yeah, we sell a fire truck, here's your fire truck, six hundred forty thousand. Okay. This is something we can make work, well, start looking at it and it's just, there's, they, they, they've got them sitting on the lot. They've got them sitting there. In a, in a day and age when a fire truck takes two to three years to build and order and there's high demand and people are waiting for them, why do we have trucks sitting on the lot? That's a big red flag to me. Okay? So you start looking into customer reviews and they're not great. And there's, there's one guy just going back and forth on Facebook, on their department Facebook, about their twenty twenty-three engine, they bought brand new last year and spent out of service, inoperable for six months straight. And they said, oh, well, we're waiting on parts, and he says, BS, you're waiting on parts, he said, you never filed the warranty claim. You tried to bake the part yourself twice and it kept breaking and now you finally ordered the part and you're waiting on some part that you sourced from Italy that you can't get one of now. And this guy was calling them out.
You're on your next headache.
Right, you know, so.
We got that right now.
You know, it's like my new one, you know, and the critics are always the loudest, you know, so I looked a little deeper, they don't even offer a warranty. Oh, I take that back, they offer a one-year warranty. They offer a one-year warranty, everything else, it is what it is.
What, it's what you get?
Yeah, so like if the, you know, the, the transmission has a whatever, a thirty-six thousand mile warranty, then that's the transmission warranty. You know, they don't offer anything outside of what it is, it's just, I mean, it's out there, you know, there's anybody that will sell you a Pinto. And I don't think it's a wise investment of money because, you know, it seems like you're buying something that's not designed to last. I think what, what we're looking at is, is very much middle of the road, it's not the Cadillac. Um, it's not the beater, I think it's something that's, and, and there is, there's extra cost in buying things like that fully extruded aluminum body, it's, it's a heavy duty body and it literally is a lifetime transfer of a whole body in this truck, just like the ladder is, is designed, so when it wears out, you send it back to Rosenbauer, they lift the whole body up, they drive a new cabin chassis under it, set it down, rewire the whole thing and send it back out at half the price of a new one. That's an in, uh, initial investment, but, you know, now, you, you get a truck that's gonna last and not crap out on you in five or six years.
Cost versus value is what I heard you say, you're getting value in what you're purchasing.
Well, we need to take a look at all the, these purchase options, and we can sit here all night and talk about this, but we need to probably go outside and take a look at what we're thought about, but we also need to do what you said to Karen and Bobby and, you know. Pardon?
Do you have it in your email?
Okay, and we need to, we have a word session among us.
I have another question, though, you had asked me what I have in my funds. Do you have a separate account for yours or can you pay for your capital trust that's a million two, you can just come up with money?
We just say there's money sitting in the, in the general fund that we could probably have to do it, which is like, right now, we've got eighty thousand sitting there from two years of, well, I take that back, this year, forty thousand dollars that we budgeted and carried budget for lease purchase. So if we do that again next year, we'll have eighty thousand dollars sitting there in twenty twenty-five for, for the purchase of the, of the truck. Um, and then we also have just reserves that all of my stuff is just in the general fund. So, and that's fairly, you know, we're sitting in a good place. So you can take, so I could.
Seven hundred thousand dollars down.
Seven hundred thousand, but, I mean, I could take a good chunk of it out of the general fund.
That's what I'm saying, we need to look at all our options.
Well, that's it, that's, I'm wondering, I mean, unless I'm being naive about this, there's, there's ways of finding, stretching, I mean, you're not upfront all the way, but you gotta have something upfront. Let's call it a down payment, right? And then we need to alpha that down payment, find out what we can finance and stretch out over a five-year type period and finance it out. I would imagine, but that's to those point, we gotta go look at the numbers.
We gotta look at the numbers.
A fair question.
And I'm hoping to do that.
So the, the forty thousand dollars that you put in uh, to his, uh, to his budget, that's what I pull out before I pay my half, right? That's because I matched that with my cum fire fund.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you pay that upfront now, then you're going to borrow the rest of it and you'll use that forty thousand dollars to make your payments?
Well, no one said that we're borrowing money.
Right, no.
I, yeah. So I could take money out of the general fund to do what we need to do. I don't, I would rather not borrow money.
But it's an option, we can take a look at borrowing or we can take a look at lease, but that's why I was saying we gotta
Right.
check everything out and see what makes a little sense.
All the time in the past, borrow money, right? No?
No.
We've never, we, I've been hearing about borrow money for purchasing.
Basically.
We got it sitting in our general funds.
We as a department borrow against your general fund.
Right, yeah.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, and, and it goes back in.
But the town's never been on the debt. It's all been in sorry, that's what I meant by putting it back in.
Right.
Overtime, yeah.
And at some point I do want to restructure, so we're putting money into a specific fund for the purchase of the truck. I'm waiting for the cop claim to finish and then I'm gonna sit down with the gratillion and get some stuff set up, so we're moving funds around, so it's sitting and ready for, for purchase.
Um, I have to talk to the general fund, I've done anything like that. I know I have two hundred thousand in the fire fund for uh, nature purchases, and then I have the cum fire which pays for all all purchases. So with the two of those together, I'd have four hundred thousand now. Another two years, another hundred thousand, you know that, but.
So you're, so you're saying you would have four hundred now and a hundred and fifty in another two years, so you have five fifty total, is that right?
And then I would have absolutely nothing left.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand. I won't do that, but I'm just.
Yeah, that's, because I have two hundred thousand in the capital investments in the fire, fire departments region. And then in the cum fire, there's probably two hundred and fifty thousand now. And I put, uh, you know, another fifty thousand each year into that cum fire.
What's a cum fire fund, Marlene?
That's a fund that is separate from my fire EMS, it's just a separate fund and that pays, like, like I said a little bit ago, it pays for ambulances, it pays for fire equipment, it pays for air tanks, it pays for fire trucks, it pays for any kind of equipment.
Oops, it's during the movie.
That has its own gap rate, so that, that one has its own tax rate, separate from, from my fire department. Your fire department. So it's like our, our cumulative capital development fund has its own tax rate that's separate from property tax.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
But it's in addition to, so like last year, I asked you to reestablish the cumulative capital development tax rate and you didn't do it, and so we're stuck that, but that tax rate is separate in addition to the normal tax rate.
Is that a one-time option or can we look at that again?
We can look at that, it's too late for this year, we have to look at it next year.
You mean, it's too late for the collections to come in?
It's too late to reestablish it for next, for next year's collection, you would have to re, you have to do that by then.
Yeah, but if, if in this process you decided you wanted to do it, you could do it just with. Yeah. It seems like a lot of good discussion. There's money in places and.
A lot of.
There's been a lot of work to get money in places too, so, you know, it hasn't. You know.
Absolutely.
We've been very, I try to be, you know, very, um, frugal. With the money that we have, which has set us up to to have some decent reserves, reserve funds. Um, you know, there's a lot of things that we could be doing, like, I don't know, which you have all, um. But we don't. And and so we've got some money that's that could be available for purchases.
I can't speak for, um, Sally or Bill. I can speak for myself. I think you've demonstrated that this is something you gotta do. I mean, I I think we. Theoretically could batch the other one up, but it's not gonna be a solution. It's gonna be a temporary thing. So as far as I'm concerned, I think. I'm not speaking for everyone else, but as far as I'm concerned, I think to me. You demonstrated that. Then I I was hesitant coming in. I didn't, I thought maybe you had another engine and.
I wish we did, it wouldn't be a good deal, but.
Well, that's true, Terry, but. You know.
Changing this operation, you know, as a word. We gotta remember this when we budget the end of the year when I say, hey, we gotta get this up and. It's not, I'm not doing it because I'm getting ready, so I'm like, bad, doing it because the public needs that, needs that, just. Not, it's just the way it's going. It's not a, not a step, it's a step now. We're we're behind, yeah. Farther out behind now, I think that. That why they waited inflation for this to, you know, hurt us. But I mean, it's been good with our gear and good with our trucks through the year, you know, it's. Second year I've been here, forty hours, whatever. Been a long time, but it's always been good. It's always been, here's what we need. It's not what we want. It's not my fire. But it's our fire, it's community, the deeds, it's not my guys, they'll do whatever. I told them, we'll get some damn buckets, we'll go at it. We'll do it till we can't do it anymore. I got mad, maybe when we shovel the hay out of a barn for eight hours, the fish. I thought nobody was feeding the horses. But it's a true, it's a real reason, it's all like, through hay, I got it.
Walking away, I hear for six years out from the normal schedule, but we're starting to experience what we're gonna be looking at over that six years, trying to keep this thing alive is not gonna be. We're gonna be draining money. We're not gonna be able to recapture, not that we can capture it now. You're telling me that we're getting something that is upgradable and is durable with aluminum that thirty years. So I'm hearing that it's an investment that could defer, we're gonna hit it upfront, but you're looking to defer that cost over thirty years rather than twenty.
Right, this truck, this truck.
Are twenty-five.
Have to last thirty.
We're getting six years early, but we're gonna capture maybe that on the backside or have the upgradable. You're saying we got emission standards coming down the line that we're gonna have to front anyway. And we may be spending money on a truck, you know, that's gonna be.
Well, this one.
Just so I understand the day, that's not weighing in on anything. You're telling me also today that you don't think private funding is because of the taxes, so knocking on the door, not really a viable option. And the second thing is, you told me that grant writing. It's just kind of whistling in the wind, we'll say it that way, and not really something that's a viable option. That's what I heard. Yeah.
Right.
Fair enough. Okay.
The thing is, if we spend all of this this year, though, and six years from now, they're gonna come back for another truck.
Not gonna be in six years, it's gonna be in three years. Because in three years, we're gonna be ordering the truck that's two. In two years.
What are you gonna replace in three years?
Tanker.
Which is now eight hundred thousand.
Because we went over the top of the tankers I explained to you. We went over top because it doesn't use as much as our engines. And and I feel that we can get five years out of it, I hope, with some maybe maintenance if it needs it. Right now it's up operational, pump's working, tank's not leaking. I mean, it's okay, we can get by with it, hopefully five years, because it doesn't get used every time barbs.
You're gonna tell me yes, but.
Bob, don't be critical.
I'm not, but I almost anticipated the answer to the question. Does the new engine help you lengthen the life of that tanker?
No.
Okay, good. I appreciate that.
Along with that, though, you know, that that truck, it's two thousand one.
Check.
And, you know, we've been able to keep it for twenty-two years, twenty-three, because we don't use it on everything, but honestly, it's a good truck and. I think we need to figure out a way to get that in for a refurbish. It it's, you know, I mean, like. Maybe see if they can do some corrosion proofing on it, do some different things to to get more longevity out of that truck, because that that truck really is a gem. Because it's all pre emissions, all the all the crap. And it's just a good bulletproof truck and it's not gonna last forever, but maybe we need to figure out a way to. Get it gone through and and significantly like in that life, because it's it's got one job and that's the whole water. Now, it does have a pump on it and it does get used as a pumper, especially if the engine's down for maintenance, that's what we run up the door. Um. Like she said, that that truck is is over a hundred or over eight hundred thousand dollars replaced today, it's that truck. So I think, you know, for that, you could that way, thanks. And I want to encourage everybody to, or anybody to be a part of this process with this stuff. Because there is a lot of work that goes in on the backside. This isn't something that we make a phone call and. Get a number and then we walk in, plop in your lap, so. There's a lot of stuff that gets looked at and trucks and comparing products, I would encourage any of it. And that's with any of the fire department processes. Be involved in the process. See, you know, see the challenges we're up against, see what what it takes and. And why this stuff's so expensive and important.
Very valuable, Marlene.
Something else, I believe there's an engine out in front. Uh, on the side. Facing there, push you in there, help you up in there, Marlene.
Thank you.
If you need, and you just.
I mean, more money on Marlene getting up there than me.
So so where where do we go from here? What's the pleasure?
Gonna schedule something, doesn't get cheaper by the day, gets more expensive by the day. So your schedule is. Probably when you think you can come back and say, let's try this out.
When you say that, we we've got a schedule and understand the financial.
Yeah, we need a scheduled work session.
Yeah.
Okay. You know.
Are are you firm on your price?
That price is never. That that price feels like this. I'm I'm saying.
Until you sign the contract, you know.
That's right, until it's, uh, we're buying that truck and you say, put the dot on that line, say we're buying the truck. There's no price. A lot like a house. Rosenbauer wanted to you too, that when you sign the contract, that the price doesn't.
It locks.
Pierce is not that way. It's, here's what it is today, but just FYI.
Yeah.
This is gonna go up.
And the price of aluminum.
I mean, are are they willing to do anything since we're considering them?
None of them do, because they're two years out. They don't care if we do business with us, that department or that department, we're not gonna move as fast as our package, make them. We don't, though, we're not looking for business, you're coming up. A little different.
They got the market.
Yeah, they've got what they want and we want it. Uh, if we buy it tomorrow, I'll say, no, we don't care, put you on the list, man.
What do they want for a down payment?
Haven't pushed that button yet, because we don't know what we've got financially to go into that. I'm sure, I'm sure as a, if it goes anything along the lines of where the ladder was, I'm thinking you could probably get into this thing probably for. Uh, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to start.
I'm forgetting that is.
Yeah.
You think ten percent might get us in?
Yeah, very possible.
I mean, it's something we, something we can shoot at at this end.
Yeah.
There's, there's nothing due until it's delivered. Right now, that's two years out.
Right, yeah, but you gotta put a hundred, you gotta put, you gotta put your down payment down, and that'll lock in our price, that's what I'm.
No, there is no down payment. It's, it's, the contract is the contract.
Okay.
But there's discounts built in with down payments, bigger down payments, so like, so.
Basically buy the chassis in advance.
So the chassis today, right now, as of this afternoon, five hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars. That would get you whatever discount builds in. I think that that ends up being a truck that's one point one seven three. And that would be, and they've got some some. If if we did a payment plan through them, five versus seven versus ten years. It's all in there. Take a look at it.
All right, you said everything, but, yeah, just need to review it.
Yep, I need to do that.
Thank you for taking the time to educate.
Absolutely.
Learned a lot.
So we meet in two weeks? That work for everybody?
Let's take a look at the documents and you you're gonna tell me when to schedule the next session. And I will put that out there with these.
Sally, what do you think? Two weeks?
Let's say a little bit of the document.
Well, yeah, see what what we've got and, you know. What. He sent Karen, she passed on to.
We got a meeting next week, maybe by next week, we. Everybody will look at the documents and we can set it time then.
Maybe we could.
Yeah, because, yeah, I'm gonna be gone.
That way we get everybody in on.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Ten to twelve days after. After meeting next week.
Hey, we'll be outside waiting for you, I'm sure something else.
So what's plan B if this thing dies?
I'm a volunteer and I I'll do what I can with what materials that I have. And we do what we can with what we have forever. It's a, you know, let's think it's gonna die.
Okay.
My house.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It's not getting better.
Yeah.